I'd like to welcome everyone to the Winthrop Town Council meeting, April 18th, 2023. We are in the Harvey Hearing Room. We are on Zoom this evening. Phone number is (646) 558-8656. ID number (865) 846-03072. Roll call, please.
Counsel Harv, here. Counsel.
Fusillo.
Counsel Fusillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco. Counsel Flakat.
Here.
Counsel Ayello.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yeah.
President Lutere.
Yeah. Please rise for the pledge. By Counsel Flakat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the April 4th meeting have been circulated. Any discussion on the minutes? Do I see a motion to approve? Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel Munson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those know the ayes have it. Public hearings, we have a review of the Board of Appeals' composition. So we will open a public hearing. And I will go to Vice President Ruggiero.
Thank you, Council President. The Rules and Ordnance Subcommittee took up these motions twice, most recently at our meeting at 6:30 earlier today. They both passed with a positive recommendation coming out of committee. One of them would increase the number of members of the Board of Appeals, expanding the body. And another motion would adopt a state law that would allow for associate members of the Board of Appeals to vote in the case that there's an absence from a regular member of the Board of Appeals on the night that a vote is called. Both of these motions were presented to us with the intent of making the adjudicatory body of the town a little bit more efficient and to keep these hearings kind of moving through the system that we have. So those both passed with a positive recommendation and will be discussed later on tonight.
Thank you. And this is something, the Board of Appeals, you know, has a tremendous amount on their plate. And the way it's been set up, that it's been constituted of six members with three members sitting on an individual hearing. And if those three members can't be there at a subsequent meeting, if one's gone, they've been postponed and put off. So this will enable us to go from six to seven members. And this will enable up to five members to sit on a particular hearing. So it gives more flexibility because the associate members, with somebody who's not sitting on a hearing, but they have been at all the meetings, and somebody else is missing, they're able to step in. So I thought it would be a really good thing to do, and it seems like it's going in that direction. Do we have any questions on Zoom? Do we have any questions? Karen?
Can you unmute Karen?
Hi, Karen Chark, it's PC2. I'm sorry, Counsel President, but we didn't have any sound there for a while. And I really don't understand why you're doing this. I hate to ask you to leave, but would you mind?
No, that's fine. The thought here was, right now, we have six members on the Board of Appeals with three members sitting on any particular hearing. Those three members have to be present, you know, if, in subsequent meetings, if it's continued, if a member's not there, it's been postponed. If another member's not there the following time, it's been postponed again. If we were able to expand the board by one member to seven and have five sitting on an individual hearing, that, and we're enabling the alternates, if they are at the hearings, if somebody is absent at a subsequent hearing, they could sit in. This would require four out of five positive votes to pass the request. And as it is now, it needs a unanimous vote, three out of three. It just makes it a lot more fluid and, you know, looking at what other cities and towns have done, it seems to fall in line. Any, anything on that, Karen?
Well, I'll just add to.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Thank you. What this, we're also, what we're doing here is we're adopting Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23. So we're not recreating anything, we're not blazing any trails. We're literally just adopting this chapter of the Mass General Law and using that as another kind of tool in the tool shed for us to make a more efficient style of government. So this has been done. It's not like we were just getting creative here, thinking of it in-house.
I guess, Counsel President, that was my next question. Was this part of the ordinance that we had, or was it in the town charter? But it is a Mass General Law, so you can't just vote on this.
Yes, it is a Mass General Law. We did get legal opinion on this. This was at Rules and Ordnance for a little while, and they were very prudent with it and asked a good amount of questions, which we had legal look at and got back to us with their recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions on this public hearing? And we will go back to this in old business, seeing then we will close the public hearing. Public comments, we'll start in-house first this time. Any public comments? On Zoom, any public comment?
Nope.
All right, we will have another round of public comment later in the meeting. Correspondence, Denise? I did receive a correspond, oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Flakat?
I received a couple of letters. One, I forwarded to the town manager, and he took care of it. But it was about keeping the door open in E.B. Newton so that handicapped people could access the elevator.
That's, yeah.
And apparently it's been taken care of. And the other one was complaining about the, the roads that are being torn up in the Highlands. We are suffering through quite a lot of construction up in the Highlands. And I had to go back to this woman and explain that it's going to go on for a while and that we will repave the roads after all of this is done. But it doesn't make any financial sense to repave after every little project that we're doing, and there are a lot of them.
Of course. Counsel Munson.
I also received some correspondence from one of my constituents and to address the, the crosswalk signal that seems to be faulty going across Main Street approximately around, let's see, the street is Douglas in Maine. And so I believe that's probably already being addressed, but I just thought I'd relay what has been said.
Thank you. I did receive also correspondence from a constituent on Summit or Sagamore and with discussion on public ways in that area. And I had received correspondence quite a while ago concerning the same issue. And I've talked with town manager, and we're looking into trying to resolve this issue. We, there are several, you know, public ways throughout the town, and we should be more diligent in maintaining them, but we're also potentially looking into a scenario where we could maybe eliminate them or see if the property owners are willing to take them over, which was a request here. So I do thank them for the correspondence, and we are looking into it, and we'll have an answer in short order. That is it. Counsel Flakat?
Can I comment on that?
Oh, absolutely.
They're essentially public sidewalks, and it would seem.
It's a public access point, it's an easement that's granted. It's their property, and it's an easement that's given.
Well, so it's a sidewalk on their property, essentially. And this would be closing public sidewalks.
Well, it's not, yeah, it goes in between people's houses, it involves people's backyards, and it's used by more, you know, not for the best of purposes a lot of times, because it's out of the way.
Well, I'm sure that's true of the public sidewalks as well. And those walkways, which were originally installed to access the train stations, are part of the charm of Winthrop, I think. And I think on the whole, they're well-used.
Well, and again, this isn't anything we're doing right now, I just wanted to relay the correspondence. Counsel Ayello.
I'd like to share the sentiment that Counsel Flakat just expressed. Some of these are easements, some of these are owned by the town. And independent of all of that, the walking friendliness of this community is dependent upon a lot of these pathways for neighbors to meet neighbors. And I think it would not be a good precedent for the town's walkability and community connectiveness to get rid of those. We do need to do a better job.
Maintaining.
Of maintaining them, and that's why we collect taxes, and we need to be efficient with our tax spending dollars. So I agree with that part of it, but to put them into private hands, I think is just not a wise way to go.
Counsel DeMarco.
Sorry, I know I'm late to the game here today. I actually responded to this correspondence because I, I'm actually one of those people who walk those paths all, all the time. Take my daughters, teach them about the narrow gauge, teach them about the history of Winthrop, why these pathways are here. At the same time, I understand the importance of privacy. You know what I mean? I, I can understand that completely. Those, those walkways, if they stay, they need to be maintained. A lot of them haven't been fixed in 70 years or probably even longer. You know, and I'm not just thinking about the, the walkway from Revere Street up to Summit Ave, I'm also thinking about the walkway up into the Highlands by the old Century 21 building. Those stairs haven't been touched. They're actually somewhat dangerous. So, you know, we either have to upkeep these pathways, or maybe we do need to get rid of them, I don't know. But, but I'd love to keep them and love to keep them safe.
And I brought this up, I think, a year or two ago, especially, there's a lot of them around Court Road, too, with access to the water, and they have to be maintained. But we're not going to solve this problem tonight, this was correspondence, and it's going to go much further than this. Vice President Ruggiero.
Real quick, and I don't mean to debate here, but I definitely think this is a much larger conversation. You know, just one other idea, a neighbor of mine wanted to quote, "adopt" a pathway at one point, just like we kind of adopt the intersections in town here, you know, this pathway or this intersection is sponsored by so-and-so. So just maybe another thing for our beautification committee to, to think about. I think that's who Connie handles that now in town, I'm not positive about it, but just another thing for folks to think about.
All right. And that's it for correspondence. Committee reports, public health and safety. Counsel Flakat.
Thank you, Counsel President. The Public Safety Committee met to discuss pest control and the impacts on our environment on April 13th. We reviewed and discussed the current contractor's contract and some of the regular reports. We were convinced that the town is not receiving full integrated pest management, nor is the local wildlife being considered. We discussed the fact that other organizations in town are also trying to mitigate pest infestations by similar means. We had a meeting, that meeting was adjourned at 6:05. We met with the town manager this evening before the council meeting, and the committee will meet again next week to discuss next steps.
Thank you. Rules and ordinance, Vice President Ruggiero.
Yep, rules and ordinance met just earlier this evening at 6:30. We passed both of those motions that we had discussed earlier out of committee. They're in your inboxes, and we hope to vote on them later on in old business. Our meeting was relatively quick, we had discussed a lot of the nuts and bolts of this at our prior subcommittee meeting, so this was just more of a formality and making sure that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's after receiving feedback from the Board of Appeals clerk and our town, our town attorney. Had answered a few of our questions, and we just wanted to go over those once more. So that's our committee report.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry for not being there, Stephen.
School Department report, the school committee, we met last Monday evening, the 10th, and on the, on the agenda was a public hearing for the fiscal '24 budget. And it was announced that the school committee would be voting, will be voting on that budget at their meeting next Monday night, April 24th. Also, on April 25th, I believe, they will be meeting with the Finance Commission, which most department heads will meet with the Finance Commission discussing their budgets, and the superintendent will do the same for the schools. And it will be a back and forth, the Finance Committee will be asking questions about the budget, the superintendent will be making sure that she has adequate funding and presenting her arguments if there's any need to try to increase their budget, or I guess decrease, but probably wouldn't be asking for that. And that, so that school committee, the school department budget for fiscal '24 will be voted on at, their request will be voted on at the next Monday's meeting on the 24th. Now we will go to the town manager's report, Counsel DeMarco.
I just wanted to make one quick comment, and I think this is the appropriate time to do it. School committee member, Lane Petry, finished the Boston Marathon yesterday.
Oh, did she?
So, so I thought she deserved some credit for that, so I wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, that's an incredible accomplishment, and congratulations to Lane. Tony.
Thank you, Counsel President. Wanted to announce first off, the trees on Shirley and Veterans there by, rather than planted, watering bags are installed, and we've been filling the watering bags, and so we're happy to get those planted. There's still two more left to go, but we're waiting on some construction that's going to happen at the corner of Shirley and Veterans there, and that work that's going to be done before we finalize those and place those in, so we're happy to have that done. So as promised, that was done. Everyone, I sent out to the council, but for all the general public to know, our proposed FY '24 budget is online, it's on the website. It's a sort of a tabable document, you can go through the table of contents, hit the different departments and the different sections, it'll take you right there. Certainly, any questions on it, feel free to reach out to the town manager's office. There'll be a formal presentation to the council on May 2nd on that, in accordance with the charter. Ferry is moving forward, we are waiting for the new, the engine manufacturer Cummins to come and program the engines on, hopefully tomorrow, I believe the 19th they're scheduled to do that. Originally, there was a sea trial planned, but the engine manufacturer wanted to wait till we had the hull cleaned, it's been sitting up there all winter, so they want to get it cleaned. So we've notified some other people that we're going to plan to come on the sea trial, so they're been informed as well. And we're going to do the sea trial after we take it to Gloucester. We'll do the hull inspection that the Coast Guard requires, get the hull cleaned, put it back in the water, and then we'll do the sea trial at that point, which we need for the warranties on the engine. So I'm hoping by the end of the month, but I'll put an update on my town manager newsletter this week to let everybody know, because I know everybody's waiting for the ferry to get going, so as soon as we get going. It's really backed up in Gloucester right now with the bigger boats, they're staying out of the water for about two weeks on end, so Jack, our captain, that's been the point person on this, has talked to them, they're going to let us know when they've got a quick opening, because our boat's a little smaller, then they'll be able to pull the boat out, get the work done, get the Coast Guard to do the inspection, and we'll get on our way. So that's where the ferry stands right now. The site plan, hopefully will be done in the next week or so for the old middle school site. We talked to Grady Associates, and they're making good progress on that, so that should be done shortly. Had the first meeting with the Finance Commission last Thursday, that went well. Looking forward to the more meetings with them, I know we got those coming up this Thursday, and then I think the school's after that.
Tuesday.
Yeah, a few other Thursdays coming up after that, so we're looking forward to that process. Want to set up a meeting in May to, with the council, one of the two meetings, they have Barry and Dunin, who did the analysis on the parking rec program, they're ready to present, so I'll plan on that, so that's coming up. Had a good meeting today with Senator Edwards' office and some members of the CDICR, and Wendy Page-Malar with regard to the Pride Potluck, we're scheduling for June, so that's going to be in Ingleside again, and will sometime in June, probably mid-June, looking potentially on a Saturday in June, so early evening, four to seven, something like that. So more to follow, but we haven't locked in everything yet, so. And we are, we'll have the list of, next, at the next meeting as well, along with the budget presentation, we'll have the list of easements, both temporary and permanent easements, for the Revere Street tip project, for the council to vote for the takings. We've got, answered a lot of phone calls, a lot of questions, you know, at least 30 or 40 or so. And then now the real work begins, because we've got to get all the, work with council to get all the easement docs together, set up meetings with everybody, get everything signed, answer any questions. There's probably three or four properties that are actually, the permanent easements actually encroach on their property a little bit, but most of the easements are for sidewalks that people may or may not even own, they owned, but there are, you know, three or four that we'll have to work on, so. That'll be over the next two or three weeks, so we can make sure we get it all done and recorded for that June deadline, so we can put the project out to bid. And other than that, I think that's all I have, and certainly, you know, to open, answer any questions that the council may have.
Counsel Munson.
Thank you, Counsel President. How you doing, Tony?
I'm good.
Good. I, I was hoping you could give us an update on the sidewalk review and any crosswalks planned. I know that you had talked about something at the end of Tileston.
Yep, we have some plans coming up that are in the capital plan, that's available on the budget doc, there is a list of the sidewalks in the back there. I've also reached out, and it was in the capital plan as well, at Counsel Ayello's urging, and I would have done it anyway, but we reached out to many engineering firms, and we actually got a great price from VHB to do a sidewalk study, which will deal with not only grading our sidewalks, but dealing with the accessibility issues and things like that. They are going to hopefully get started this summer, the price they gave us included being able to use some interns that they have coming in for summertime help, which kept the price down a little bit, so that's moving forward, so we'll have that study going. They did a great study in Arlington not too long ago, and when, after I took a look at that, we made sure we reached out to them to get a price, so.
So are there any sidewalks, crosswalks planned currently?
We have a few, yeah, they're in the capital plan, I don't have a member up to my list, but yes, the ones that you and I talked about, that's in process, and a few others as well.
Okay, great, that's wonderful.
All right.
Thank you.
Counsel Ayello.
Tony, first of all, I know some other people from another organization were up at the same time that the boat overview was going through.
Yeah.
I got comments back saying they couldn't believe what great shape that the boat was being kept in, so.
Oh, good.
Kudos to you and the team to.
Yep, that's the team, that's Captain Jack.
Captain Jack, well.
And our mechanic, Jimmy, I haven't met yet, but I've talked to him on the phone a bunch of times, but yeah, so, no, they're doing a great job.
You know, mid-cycle overhaul and all that work, so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, that was great. Two things related, we talked about the ZBA motion, but we've also talked in the past about getting an update, possibility to our transit lodging. Do we have a target date to get that before the council?
I'm hoping to get end of May, early June, I'm working with our new town council, obviously, town attorney, I should say, Jim's up a letter on that. And another thing that's going on on the side there is, I know you had sent me some companies that, you know, third-party vendors that can monitor that. I looked into that, they had had some issues in another town they worked in, but by doing that research, I also found another couple of companies, so I'm doing the legwork on that to find a good third-party vendor.
Mine was only as an example of the industry that's out there.
No, no, I get it, yeah, yeah. They had used them in Nantucket, then Nantucket didn't like them, and then they ended up using somebody else, so I've been doing some homework on that, trying to find, as we integrate, you know, look at the bylaw, but also have that third-party vendor ready to go so we can do the monitoring, so.
So one, one particular question, I think it's important to get that monitoring in, because they can actually go on the web and figure out what's happening, is it consistent with that? Is your sense that, that the fees we're charging, so the income we're getting from the transit lodging community, fees coming in, are adequate to pay for the cost of the, of a monitoring contract, or do we have to have it?
I don't think they are now, I think they could be.
So we probably have to have both, in other words, a cost estimate for what it would cost for the monitoring.
Right.
And then when we're looking at revisiting this stuff late May, we also probably need to revisit the structure of the fees, so we have enough fees coming in, so we don't end up having taxpayers subsidize that industry.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah.
And then to try to get the increase in the room stacks and all of that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So if we could have that as early as possible.
At least three or four times a week conversation going on in my office, so.
End of May would be great, thank you.
Yeah.
Between that and the use variance, those are two things that come out of OIC that we knew would be a little time-consuming, but hopefully by the end of May, early June, we can see some.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other questions for the town manager? Counsel Munson.
Is this a good time for you to, to express what was discussed during the recent CDICR meeting regarding the flag policy?
Well, it's the next item on the agenda.
Okay, well, then it is a good timing.
You're ahead of your time.
Are we finished? Any other questions for the town manager? Then the next item on the agenda is the CDICR update, and we're fortunate also to have two members from the CDICR here, Father Walter and John Morgan, we thank you for coming, and you're regulars anyway, but we thank you for coming. So we, there has been a meeting since our last meeting, so we can hear an update either from the committee themselves, if they would, willing to do so.
I'm going to pass it off, because I could not attend that meeting, the police chief attended in my absence. I did receive an email with regard to, they had a lengthy discussion about the flag policy and had some questions around that, which I'll get back to them on, but that was the only really input I have on that, so I'd certainly pass it off if they want to give an update on it.
Why don't you read that into the record?
I don't have that available to, right in front of me, but.
I have it.
Yeah, feel free. Concern over the sentiment piece of that, but I wanted to, I wasn't there to explain that that was the piece that had to be in there based on the Shirklev policy. Well, yeah, I can give an update at the next meeting, they won't have another meeting before our next meeting on May 2nd, so I can certainly read that in at that point, but did you want to talk about anything else, or any other update things you guys talked about, or?
Do you want me, is, would it be appropriate to read?
Is it lengthy?
No, it's about a paragraph.
That's fine.
Fine.
Good evening, Counsel Munson. As promised, the CDICR discussed the flag policy and recommendations of flags to be flown at the E.B. Newton. After much conversation, we voted and agreed to the following. The CDICR has concerns about the verbiage in the policy, specifically the word "sentiment" as used in item number five under "flags," expression of the, the town's official sentiment, and not having enough safeguard in this policy to protect all involved. If the council is willing to look at the overall policy to add additional verbiage to better protect the town, then we would be more than happy to make flag recommendations. Where the commission was not asked to participate in the creation of the policy, we feel that we would have lent additional suggestion to create a system that was equitable to all and was not led by sentiment. If the council keeps the policy as is, then the CDICR recommends that the federal, state, and POW flags. We are happy to discuss at our next meeting, next meeting next month, if you would like to join us. Very best, Andrea, on behalf of the CDICR.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Counsel DeMarco?
Just, just comments, I guess. I, I agree it needs to be equitable. I think, I, I think every, we're in a situation here where, you know what, we're not talking about town hall, we're talking about in front of the cultural center. And we're also talking about, you know, that's the spot where we celebrate cultures, okay? Every single flag that you raise is going to offend somebody. You know what I mean? It, it might be, you know what, you know, we have a huge Catholic population here, you raise the LGBTQ flag, it might offend some Catholics, you know? You hang the Gadsden flag, it's going to offend people because they're going to think that it's not appropriate, you know?
Or you hang a pro-life?
This isn't back, we can't go back and forth here, this is.
No, 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 there's, there's no argument here, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying.
That's our concern, unless you are fully inclusive, then you're discriminating.
Correct.
And there are no safeguards against that, there are no guardrails. When sentiment, under the legal definition, is opinion or feeling, and the town council or the town manager makes those decisions, you guys could all go off, new council comes on, sentiment changes. Where are the guardrails?
I, I actually think you're making a very good point.
Could I just make a statement also?
Yeah.
Counsel DeMarco, you said twice "you." Who are you and who are you referring to? If you're referring to you as our committee, please say your committee, not you. You is, it's a very big word. You is, it's a very big word, it can be very misrepresented.
Okay, understood, I apologize for, for saying that, that's just, everybody here knows I'm not the most gifted speaker in the room, that's for sure, so.
Okay, well, we appreciate the comments, and, you know, we're, we're definitely not infallible, right? And we appreciate the comments, and these are items, it's a policy, these are items that can be addressed, so we can definitely take a look at that. Right now, we have a policy that was passed by the council.
And all we said was, you invite us after the fact, we're not running cover for it, you passed it, it's yours, we're not taking responsibility for it.
It was, just as far as clarification.
I don't think anybody asked, yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to clear, because this all started with an email that you sent, right?
Yeah, I was just looking for some, I asked for suggestions.
Right.
And so, I wasn't, so, but that's, that's where it stayed. It's not a town council request, it was my request, so.
Nonetheless, if we gave you suggestions, we would be enforcing the policy.
Oh, lots different.
Well, that's what we said.
What it says is, as of now, with the policy as it stated, your discretion would be the American, the POW, and the state, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and we will revisit. And that was, just for clarification, was that it from the CDICR?
Yeah, was that it for the CDICR?
Was there any other items on the agenda?
There are other, other items, there was a planning committee, which Tony went to today. Unfortunately, only certain people on the commission were invited. Know why?
Were invited to a meeting? Was it a public meeting?
I, well, I'll answer that, there was only certain people invited, because when I brought it up at the prior meeting, only two people said they wanted to be invited, so that's why we invited them.
And who were they?
Andrea and I forget the other one, Kate maybe, or, there's another woman on the committee, but those two said they were interested in participating in the planning meeting.
I don't think they called.
Oh, okay, well, that's why, it was in my notes, that's why it happened that way, so, that I will, yeah, I, because that started there, so, yeah.
Any other items on the agenda? And I thank you both for your service to the town and, and for your attendance here tonight. Old business, Towns Council Review Board of Appeals Composition, Vice President Ruggiero.
Yeah, so both of these were passed earlier in one motion. I will read the first one first, and the second one second.
We'll take them individually, yeah.
Okay. Motion that section seventeen dot fifty-two dot zero one zero, entitled Board of Appeals Be Amended by Striking the First Sentence of Said Section and Inserting in Its Place the Following. There shall be established a Board of Appeals consisting of five members and two associate members appointed by the Town Council President and confirmed by the Town Council. The balance of this section shall remain currently as, I should mean, as currently written. So, that's the first motion that will expand the number of members of the Board of Appeals.
And it's expanding by one.
Correct.
It's currently six, which is always a strange number to have on a committee, anyway, but, so, this is a motion came out, a committee does not require a second, any discussion on the motion. Seeing that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. I'm sorry. Councilman Munson.
This is almost, goes without saying, but this is clearly an example of making government procedure more efficient, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Think no other discussion, a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fisillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flacott.
Yes.
Councilor Iello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Ruggiero.
Okay, motion number two, that the Town Council of Winthrop adopt the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Twenty-three, entitled The Effect of Member Attendance on Vote in Adjudicatory Matter with Respect to All Municipal Adjudicatory Hearings Conducted by the Town of Winthrop. This is the, the second part of what we talked about that would allow the associate member to vote in the case of an absence, so that the, the ball keeps rolling on, on these meetings and these hearings.
And that's assuming that they've come.
That they've had, you know, appropriate attendance throughout the entire hearing process, and.
Familiar with the.
Exactly, they may need to, in some instances, attest that they reviewed material. If, if they themselves were absent at a prior meeting throughout the hearing process, but they caught up and reviewed all the materials and listened to the recording of the meeting in advance, so there's protections in place here, so that you have the most informed members being able to vote on a matter at any given time.
Any discussion on this motion? Seeing then, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Fisillo.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor Belcher.
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Flacott.
Yes.
Councilor Iello.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes, thank you. The next two agenda items, Winthrop Beach Access Points and the MBTA. We will hopefully have clarification on this at our next meeting. I know I've reached out to Representative Turco, and he's been incredibly helpful with this, we're in the process of setting up a meeting with MBTA representation in the next week, and the, the same going on with the Winthrop Beach Access Points, and I know it's been this council's purview over the last several months, going back to the fall, making sure that we had access at our locations at Winthrop Beach, and I know Representative Turco has felt the same and has viewed his concerns on this also, so we hope to have resolution of this by our next council meeting.
Mr. President.
Councilor Iello. Just as a tag on to the DCR issue, did you have a chance to ask our Town Council to counsel law, to look up that MOU that I had described relative to about the maintenance obligation DCR made?
We talked about it, I don't think we've located it yet, but we, yeah.
Because I think that would be helpful to have that.
Yeah, we talked about it during the agenda meeting as well, we're still looking for the agreement, but we haven't found it yet.
I can't recall who told me it existed, but I will send in the name.
I'm sure it does, I just haven't found it yet, yeah.
The light will dawn a marble head. Who?
Concom.
Concom. Yeah, it was, I'll get you the name.
Okay.
The light, the light will dawn a marble head one day. Town Council Evaluation Forms, Councilor Belcher.
Thank you, we are still in the process of collecting feedback from the council. We will be meeting next Monday, there'll be a meeting posted shortly to finalize the evaluation process, and then we'll be meeting with council employees the following week.
All right. In the OIC Charter Review Recommendations Ballot Questions, so, again, just to reiterate, we've, from what we've heard from council now, that this process, with the few motions that we did move forward, we will be getting language, in the process of starting, beginning to get language ready for November ballot question, after the ballot, it will go to the State House for approval, and then come back. Any change that even is voted in the positive would not be law in the town until it came back from the State House with positive ruling. And we will have more on this in the upcoming meetings. And new business, we have none. Public comment, Council, Vice President Ruggiero.
New business, just looking at the calendar, I'd like to ask that maybe at our next meeting we have on the agenda, just a, a space for any potential proclamations that we may be hearing, just because that's our first meeting in May. I would anticipate that we would be hearing something soon, as far as proclamations go, so.
Okay. And, all right, back to public comment, second round of public comment. Anything on Zoom?
Karen.
Karen.
You're new, Karen?
First off, breathing too. The town manager has mentioned a couple of times ago, the FinCom. FinCom had an excellent meeting with the town manager on April thirteenth, it was a very well-informed meeting, and also a very healthy discussion afterwards. We're also meeting on the twentieth with the DPW, and on the twenty-fifth with the school, and they are on Zoom. I wish more people would listen in, because I think they would be well-informed. And lastly, I'd like to thank everybody who has sent me well wishes and encouragement. I am doing very, very well. Not ready to probably be seen in public yet, the thirty-two states that were in my head have been removed, and as my father always said, Swedes have a hot head, and I guess I am the living proof of that. I had no fracture, no concussion, and no bleed, and I was a very, very lucky person. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, and we are all incredibly happy that you are doing well and on the mend, and it hasn't slowed you down at all through Zoom, so I guess a positive thing out of COVID has enabled you to attend all the meetings still, in the, in just in a different capacity, but our best wishes are always with you, and great news that you're feeling better. Public relations. We have, for the last time, on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, from ten AM to noon, the annual Rabies Clinic at the old middle school auditorium, always something good on the agenda. Also, there is a mental health first aid training, April twentieth and twenty-first, eight AM to four PM at the E.B. Newton School Mental Health Seminar. And this will be, again, Thursday, April twentieth, from eight to four, and Friday, April twenty-first, from eight to four, Forty-five Pauline Street. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't wish my daughter a happy twenty-third birthday today. And other public comment, Councilor Honan.
Just a reminder for everybody to use the textile bins, that are, there's one at the basketball courts, and there's one at DPW, so please don't throw your old clothes, shoes, blankets, pillows in the trash, that's not allowed anymore, please use the textile bins for recycling. Also, there's a hazardous household waste collection day on May twentieth, that will be at the DPW lot on Kennedy Drive, you can bring everything from motor oil and filters, batteries, both household and car, cell phones, propane tanks, tires, et cetera. And then, on June tenth, a Saturday, there'll be an electronics recycling event, and that will be at the Parks and Recreation Parking Lot, one fifty-one Pauline Street. You can bring anything from computers, monitors, DVD players, VCRs, I'm sure we all have some VCRs hanging around, TVs, radio speakers, hair dryers, cameras, anything. Father Walter?
He's still using my VCR.
Yes, there, there is a list of charges, you can contact Green Day Recycling MA, that's every, capital G, capital D, and capital R, Green Day Recycling MA, at gmail dot com for the details, but there are charges for specifics, yeah. Good question, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Fisillo? Council Munson? Council, Council Belcher?
Yeah.
Council DiMarco?
Just, Mr., Mr. Morgan, I apologize once again for my loose language. Other than that, no, I don't have anything.
Councilor Iello. None? Councilor Flacott?
I have something, the, which I usually don't. The library is having another very wonderful program, which will be at the E.B. Newton Building on the Thursday, April twenty-seventh. Our native son, native to precinct four, Ted Einstein, will be here to talk about his latest book, Before Brooklyn, The Unsung Heroes, who helped break baseball's color barrier.
Very good, thank you very much. Vice President Ruggiero.
I have two things, one, I got an email about this afternoon, it is the twenty-twenty-three installment of Winthrop Engages, which will be on Wednesday, May seventeenth, at the E.B. Newton Cultural Center, which is due to begin at six PM. This was something that I think previously took place prior to COVID, but it's where a lot of civic and nonprofit groups kind of set up, and for those looking to get involved, I guess, civically or otherwise in town, this is a good opportunity for you to go and learn about some of the opportunities that are there. I think that's still in the planning process, but we may have all gotten an email about this, I'm not exactly sure. But the second thing is the twenty-twenty-three annual WinArc, I've got to get this right, run, walk, or roll around Deer Island, it is May seventh, at, registration begins at nine-thirty, and the walk will begin at eleven AM. WinArc, for those of you that don't know, is an organization that supports individuals and families with physical and developmental disabilities, and it's a really great organization